Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion, any corrections need to be made to the minutes? If not, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You also have the agenda for tonight, any changes to the agenda? And I have a motion to approve the agenda, please.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Upper Valley report is real easy, school started, and we've got more kids on main campus issue than ever before. So it's a good year at the career center. And that's all I've got. I have nothing on hearing to the public. Mr. Hiddle, treasurer's agenda.
Good evening. I was just gonna quickly go over where we were at after we've gotten into the first two months of the year. Running a little bit better than last year, about $25,000. Our expenses are in line with our expectations and our revenue's on target with our budget. The one note that I will say is in August, we compare our tax revenue, income tax wise and our property tax revenue. So from last year versus this year. So our income tax revenue went up about $147,000. But our property tax revenue that we got here in August went down $183,000. So get in one hand and leave in the other hand. So we're down about $35,000 with local revenue. And that's in line with the stagnant revenue, it seems to be. We get some from one place and lose some from another. And we did settle on the mall property. And I think that's the biggest reason that you see the change in the property tax values. It's the biggest chunk of it. Were there any questions about any of the fiscal reports that were on there? And then the other items that I have on there is the tuition rate for the 18-19 school year is 5,458.28. And again, we don't typically use this for anything, but this is if an out-of-state student wanted to attend here, that would be the rate that we're allowed to charge from the state of Ohio for their attendance. Because we have open enrollment, it doesn't really apply to what we do, but we still go ahead and approve that rate.
And that's set by the legislature, not us.
Correct. Yes, we get a letter every year from ODE stating this is the amount. And this year, that's what they've come up with. And again, it's sort of antiquated, but it's back in the day when you could charge tuition. But again, it's only for out-of-state students in our case.
So do we have any of those?
We do not.
Have we ever?
I don't know that we have, not that I'm aware of. Most places don't. I mean, you would have to figure out how to transport them too, because we wouldn't be responsible for transportation and kind of thing.
Cut under the state law.
I could see that changing someday, where somehow we'll have to figure out how to pick up people at the Indiania border. But no, we don't have anyone. And the third item on there is more of a procedural thing. We offer an OASBO Section 457 deferral compensation plan. And we've added the Roth as an option for our employees. And we just have to vote to approve that resolution that was attached so that we can offer the Roth 457 option to our employees. Those are the only things I have. Any questions?
Okay, so I have a question for Jeremy. Okay, if not, can we have a motion to approve the treasurer's agenda?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If none, please call the roll on this one, Jeremy.
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mr. Bostick?
Aye.
Mrs. Mcmackin?
Aye.
Mr. Patrizio?
Aye.
Mr. Height?
Aye, thank you. Okay, superintendent's report?
Thanks. We're off to a great start as well. Started last week, and our numbers are a little bit up this year. We have some more students in kindergarten. Our numbers will fluctuate a little bit as we go through all the way up to probably Labor Day. That's pretty much traditional. But as of now, we do have more students in the district than we had last year. So looks like we're on an upward trend over the last couple of years. And that kind of fits what Gary Huff has shared with. I think we are at our highest population now in Pickwa, he just shared with us. And that trend is upward, and we've got some new housing developments coming. And we're feeling that as well. So that's a good thing for us. We have our bus routes pretty much fine-tuned. We're still working through a little bit of those, but otherwise, they're looking really good. And each new layer that comes about changes some things. So as students get added to routes, or as preschool gets added, and that changes times and things. And I think parents have been pretty patient in terms of those things that we can't help. There's some construction in town, and that's caused some unforeseen delays. But otherwise, I think we're doing really well with that. Our safety measures that we put in place are operating pretty well. We're still working through some of those issues, but they're going well. Staff's adhering to them pretty well. And we believe that they're gonna be a good thing for our students and our staff to keep them safe in the district. So I think we're doing really well with that. Next is the attendance awareness month. That is coming up in September. We are really gonna be focusing on attendance this year. Mindy Gerhart is kind of spearheading that work. And our principals are each doing some different things in their buildings to help improve that. We know we really need to get that to improve. And as Senate Bill 410 came about, we lost some of our ability to really kind of enforce students to come because it's required. And that really had a bad impact on our attendance last year. So Mindy, if you could come up and tell us a little bit about your work and get us started on our September work earlier.
Good evening. As Dwayne said, last year, we implemented the changes from House Bill 410 with our attendance. And it changed, one, how we can, the timeframe, let's just put where we can get truancy officers and court cases in about students who are missing school. But other changes happened as well. We started out with our, looking at our chronic attendance rate during the 2016-17 report card. Had some discussions starting with principals at that. And then this summer, at the beginning of our administrative retreat, I kind of shared the data that I put together, which isn't state data, because it hasn't been finalized and those kind of things. So it might be a little bit different, but I shared those out with principals. So just a reminder with House Bill 410, I made us change the way we look at attendance. We now count student hours instead of days. So if a child misses part of a day, it's so many hours. So tardies are now out of that picture. But what it really changed is in the past, we used to look at average daily attendance. So I think as a district, we're about at a 93% yearly that students, you know, 93% of our students are in the classroom. But really started looking at the chronic absences. And those are about, that's, chronic absence means missing 10% or more of the school year. And that's excused and unexcused absences. If we look at chronic absences, if one child misses school, let's use, think about, if one child misses school two days a month, every month, they would be considered chronically absent. So that's 18 school days, full school days a year. So a little data to throw out your way. Back on our 2016-17 report card for chronic absence for the state, as a district, we were at 15, a little over 15% of our students were chronically absent, or missing 10% or more of the school year. High school was at 23%, the junior high at 13%, Pickwa Central was at almost 12%, Spring Creek was almost at 13%, and Washington was a little over 10%. So as the kids are younger, it seems like they have a better attendance rate or less chronic absences. Compare us to the state, the state average is at 16%. So some things to think about. When we use our school software, so we put all our absences in with the school software, at the end of last year, and this is all rough, so bear with me, we had roughly about 500 students in the district who are chronically absent. And that would be about 16%. At the high school, we were close to 200 students, which is about 23% again. Junior high, we're close to 100, that's about 18%. Pickwa Central, we had about 85 students, that's around 11%. Spring Creek was also around 85, so that's, since it's a smaller building, that's up to 16%, which is something Ross and I have been talking a lot about. And then at Washington, it was close to 14%, which is around 9, 9.5%. So hopefully, those numbers are high, and we'll have lower numbers when it happens. I think this year too, on the report card, there'll be an attendance indicator, am I right on that? So I think for us to meet an attendance indicator, we would have to have 13.6% of our students who are chronically absent or less. So we're way above that than what we need to be. We're three, at least three, close to 3 percentage points off. Or, I like how they always put these in here, you can have a 1.1 point reduction from the prior year to this year. I have no idea what that means. I'd have to go back and look at that. Or the other one I do know what it means, you can have a 3% reduction from the prior year to the current year. So those are some things we are going to look at on our report card. When you talk about chronic absences, there have been a lot of studies done nationally out there. So I'm gonna throw a lot of stats at you real quick. It is an epidemic, because over 7 million students in the U.S., that's 1 in 7, miss nearly a month of school. And, you know, miss a month of school each year. When we look at our young kids, our kindergarten and first grade kids nationally, 1 in 10 are chronically absent. We know that poor attendance can influence a lot of things, but at our primary schools, kids who have poor attendance, they're gonna be less likely to read proficiently by the third grade. Some of these are no brainers, you know, when you kind of read them, you're like, yeah, I understand that. This one has changed, and this one's the big one that hits me. By 6th grade, chronic absences become the leading indicator that a student's gonna drop out of high school. So there's a lot of data here that we can use. And the reason why September is absence awareness month is because if you look at the first month of school, so if you look at September, and you look at the kids who are absent during the month of September, half of the students who miss 2 to 4 days during the month of September are more than likely going to miss a month of the school year. So if we can get the habit starting early to come to school, and we get kids in the habit of coming to school and having a huge awareness in September, hopefully that will help. We know that attendance improves when we engage our students and our parents in positive ways. So we already have PBIS going on in the buildings. The primary buildings are, most of the teachers are enforcing PACS, they've been trained in that. We have in our buildings, parent groups, so we know that we're engaging our parents. And we need to continue doing that. And we know that when our kid's attendance does improve, their academic progress is gonna get better, and they're more likely they will graduate from high school. I have some other stuff to throw at you too. This one actually came from some of the guidance counselors. And correct me if I'm wrong, but Spring Creek sent this to me. And they're gonna start sharing this out, and hopefully we can get this posted out. But it's kind of some neat things, because we always think tardies, you know, let's go, we're used to saying tardies, but can't really use them anymore. But you might say, well, my kid just comes in late, and they only miss so many minutes of the day. You know, what effect does that have on them? So if we look at just, if they miss part of school, if they miss just 10 minutes per day, that's gonna equal to 50 minutes a week. And if you look at that, that's gonna be 1 and 1/2 years per week, so over 12, or 1 and 1/2 weeks per year, sorry. If you look over the 12 years of they're in school, it should be 13 if they're counting kindergarten, if they miss 10 minutes every day, they're gonna miss a half a year of school. So if we jump that up to an hour a day, again, that's a day a week, that's 8 weeks in the year. And over their 12 years, that's 2 and 1/2 years of schooling. So even just missing a little bit each day, does make a big impact. So what we have here today is principals have been challenged to keep working on ways to improve their school attendance. I talked with Casey Heinz, our mayor, about our dilemma. And she's even shared with me businesses are having the same issue. So she has a proclamation that she would like to share with the board tonight about attendance awareness month. So Casey.
Mayor Casey, I should say. And I'd like to invite Superintendent Thompson to come up with us to receive the proclamation. Whereas good attendance is essential to the student achievement and graduation, and Pickwa City Schools are committed to dedicating resources to reduce chronic absenteeism rates. And whereas chronic absence, missing 10% or more of school for any reason, including excused and unexcused absences, or just 2 of 3 days a month, is a proven predictor of academic trouble and dropout rates. Pickwa City Schools have a rate as high as 34.85% of those in 12th grade to an overall rate of 16.64% from students kindergarten through 12th grade. And whereas chronic absence is now required, a required reporting metric under the federal Every Student Succeeds Act. And whereas improving attendance and reducing chronic absence takes commitment, collaboration, and tailored approaches. And whereas absenteeism undermines efforts to improve struggling schools, and it is hard to measure improvement in classroom instruction if students are not in class, to benefit with our valued teachers. And whereas all students, even those who show up regularly, are affected by chronic absence, because teachers must spend time differentiating for students who missed lessons. And whereas schools and community partners can reach out more frequently to absent students to determine what barriers they face while attending school, and what would help them attend more regularly. And whereas chronic absenteeism can be significantly reduced when schools, families, and communities work together to monitor and promote good attendance and address hurdles that keep children from attending school. Now therefore, I, Catherine B. Heinz, the mayor of the city of Pickwa, Ohio, to hereby proclaim September as attendance awareness month in the city of Pickwa, and urge all of our students and parents in the Pickwa City School District to be mindful of the importance for students to attend class and to reduce the rate of absenteeism. May I present this to you?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Anybody have any questions before I go sit down? I knew you would, Andy, that's why I stepped back up here.
Okay, the state said we have to do this.
Yes.
Are we, what's the protocol then? If you get a student's chronically absent, what steps do we take to help solve this issue?
So we have, there's a couple of things on here, and I had to write the numbers down just to make sure I was correct. So there are 2 things that can happen. A student can be labeled as an excessive absent student. And that would be if they miss 38 or more hours in a school month, or 65 or more hours in a school year. And those are all excused absences. So it's up to the district at that time. But principals can put an intervention plan together, they'll bring the parent in, they'll bring the student in, and develop a plan on what they can do to get the kid into school more. So it's kind of like that working relationship. Then there's the habitual truant. So habitual truant is all unexcused. So let me step back. Excessive is excused and unexcused, it's a diagram scheme of things. Habitual truant is 30 or more consecutive absences, or hours of absences, 42 or more hours in a school month, or 72 more hours in a school year, and those are all unexcused. So when that happens, anytime that threshold is met, we have a timeline of when we have to get an absence intervention team put together. The principals have to make 3 attempts to get the parents involved, and let them know that we're having a meeting. They come in, meeting is formed. Sometimes our truancy officer sets in on that meeting. And then after 61 days, 51 days, somewhere in that area, if that plan is not being met, then charges could potentially be filed against the family, or the parent, or the student, depending on the age.
Now, if we file charges, do we get any help from county?
We have not had very much success in that.
The course did not take 1 of our cases last year, not 1.
I had the discussion with the president of the State Board this summer. We live in Knoxville, and I will find her when I find, go see my grandkids. I asked her, what does she propose we do? And I got no answer from the state. I said, we don't get any help from the county, what are we gonna do?
That's the dilemma. I think it's important to note, I always appreciate when Mayor Heinz helps out with the schools, because she's always there for us. But the key to what she was saying was that whole parent piece. And if we invite parents to one of these intervention times and they don't come, we've lost that link again. So we don't, we can't, if we can't get them on board, we struggle, and we just can't get the student there. So it just is a cycle that is sometimes just really hard to break. Without that partnership with our parents, we won't be able to improve that.
I know, and that's something Frank's talked about for a long time, is more connection with the parents.
The other thing is, just to everybody's aware, there's gonna be a new juvenile judge in January or February. And I actually have a very good relationship with him. And I'm willing to sit down with him, with any group that wants to meet with him. And I'll talk to him about it. And maybe he can assist us more. And I think help his wife's involved in the school system down in West Milton, so I'm sure she's familiar with a lot of things going on.
Any other questions?
Hey, can we do a reward for every quarter of the school that has the best attendance rate? A party or something like that for them?
We have a lot of that in place. What we've kind of done is challenged principals to work with their staff and their parents and students to get that 2-way communication engaged, because they can come up with great ideas, and they have. But if it's just our idea, and we don't get to the root cause and get those ideas from everybody, I just don't know that it will improve. So we're actually meeting this week and next week and setting some goals. And we've already had some conversations together about what are some ways we can get other people involved in the problem-solving process, and get to the bottom of it, and really just get people engaged. And it really is a whole process. It's not gonna be just us that can fix it.
Are there, do the buildings have any plans too, where somebody may just visit the parents? Because sometimes they won't come in.
Right.
Sometimes we may have to be the initiator to try.
That has happened, yeah. Any other questions? We'll continue to keep everybody updated over the year, because this really has been a focal point. And we understand the impact that it has, the negative impact it has on our work. So we're gonna keep working on it.
Those numbers are, if you really think about those numbers, are pretty staggering.
What are you gonna do with seniors? Seniors, I mean, they check out, I know what's happening there. They go to Edison, some of them don't come back.
Well, you know, you gotta remember, we're competing against video games and Fortnite and all those things. We're also, a lot of online options and things that are going on out there. What we're starting to do at the high school is we're looking at our education a little bit different. We're trying to, you know, get, kids wanna leave to work, so we're trying to get work where we've established work-based learning. Trying to get kids to be more career-minded about where they're going. So we've had some programs in place. So we're trying to get ahead of this, obviously. It's, like I said, it's tough. But we know that if we come in, and kids don't wanna give us C-time, okay, especially as they get older. We know that we have to come up with a different way to instruct. We have to bring, come up with different programs to create those interests so that they can find those true, about those real values to our school. And we're making some pretty good steps right now with it.
Thank you.
Next, we have Ross Loudback, principal of Spring Creek, who will come forward. We like to feature at least one building each month and talk about some of the academic progress they're making. I know it's early, but you share a little bit about some of the work you guys are doing.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, good evening, everyone. Like, I'd like to start, a lot of my conversation tonight was gonna actually be on attendance, because that's, one, that is a building focus for sure. You guys had mentioned, is there any incentive-lative type pieces tied to that? We are currently working on those things at the building level. Want to make that a focus with our students, along with all the other components that come with it. So I'll kind of put that to the side for now. Mindy hit on a lot of it, we'll work close together. So we'll put that to rest for now. I want to thank the board real quick. You guys helped us out with some school supplies this year. I can't tell you how many parents came into the building and were pretty elated over that. It was kind of cool to see numerous parents came in the building. And we're excited, you kind of alleviated a big stress on some of those folks by doing that, so we appreciate it. With saying that, I kind of want to thank some parents too, because there's been a lot of changes at Spring Creek. And transportation being one of those big changes, we have a lot of new folks in new places. So that process took a little longer than we liked, but we're finally smoothing that out. And parents have been gracious in that, and we'll hope to get that even going faster. So some shout-outs to them. For me personally, I want to thank Cabinet, because this is, I'm in a new role this year. And a lot of summer preparation took place. And a lot of that prep work came from them, a lot of good discussions to get ready for the school year. So with that being said, I want to take a minute to kind of talk about the vision, the new vision, so to speak, at Spring Creek. The vision is very focused on whole child. We completely revamped our entire building schedule, practically flipped it upside down. That was quite the process. And before I really get into that, I want to thank Tracy and Shannon, because that was a collaborative effort. So, thank you. But again, back to the, what was the basis behind the new vision? We, Dwayne and I talked yesterday in some goal conferencing about spend a day with the kid and see how much travel time they have in a building. So that was kind of the philosophy. We wanted to do our best to keep kids in the classroom so that they could work collaboratively with classmates. With that being said, we also wanted to provide a co-teaching atmosphere to co-serve. So what we tried to do is we tried to create the schedule based around, each teacher has support for at least 2 and 1/2 hours every day. So that's, whether that be ISs, instructional aids, title folks, we are pushing in. It is, everybody is going into the classroom to work with these students so that eliminate that revolving door that was sort of happening a little bit. So that was our focus. And not only that, being whole child, we wanted to look at the whole gamut of emotional, social, emotional learning, behavioral, academics, obviously. But, so there's a lot of components that we threw in there for that. One, Mindy had mentioned the PACS Good Behavior Game. That's something new that we have adopted that's gonna really help students self-regulate within the classroom setting, where oftentimes, those students need to be removed, because they don't know how to calm down, self-regulate, collaborate with other students. We are now teaching that skill set through the PACS Good Behavior Game. So a lot of good things happening. We've revamped, we've had a lot of behavior issues last year that we really wanted to get under wraps. We did some good work through our PBIS team. But we thought it would be a good idea to utilize our guidance counselors. So we recreated and revamped Julie Bauer's guidance schedule. So she is now pushing in the classroom more and really working with those students in small group settings, but also checking in with them in the classroom to make sure they're doing okay. So she's doing really good work with that. There's a lot of other changes happening to the core of our building. I could reel off numerous committees that are changing. And bottom line, it's a new focus on how to best serve students. And with that, it's gonna be very data-driven, so that we can make informed decisions based on what we're seeing. So last but not least, I gotta give a shout-out to my staff, because again, with all these changes, and I mean, it is a lot of changes, they have truly embraced it. Our motto this year is accept the challenge, and I feel pretty comfortable saying that they have done that. So that's all I have for tonight. Maybe what I share next time, I'd like to keep you up to date on that. But if anybody has any questions, I'll answer.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sounds like you've been busy.
Been busy. Been very busy.
And along with that, Sarah Watson, who was one of our reading specialists, moved up into the vice principal, assistant principal role, and she's doing a really, really nice job too. So we're happy to have her on board. Next, talk a little bit about the Business Advisory Council. This is something that the state has changed a little bit. We've had it in process probably for the last, I would We've had it in process probably for the last, I would guess, thirteen years. The role of it has changed, the state's outlining a whole different process for it, and by the end of the year, by March third, by March first, I'm sorry, we have to actually put out a plan from that advisory council. Mr. Bostick is one of the board representatives on that, and the work really entails getting some of the business people in town to come and meet with us and to advise us and give us ideas on how we can better prepare students for that transition into the community, the workforce, et cetera. So, I'll let Mr. Bostick talk a little bit about that, and I can fill in some details where we need them.
Sure, Jim, anytime. The, it was interesting, it was my first meeting being in that committee, and basically what they're trying to do is they're trying to get different delivery systems to match up with the different students. It used to be that the students would go to J V S, or they would be in our building, and I mean, it's just, it was interesting. I mean, it was just a wide gamut that they've developed of different options to be educated. You know, the workforce thing, you know, some students will go to J V S, J V S will have some things in our building, correct? In our buildings. I mean, they've got computer education, they've got all, it's phenomenal. So, I think one of the interesting things was at the end, what we're gonna work on next, we're trying to get what the city businesses, what they think, what they really need from our students that we produce, and then we'll try to see how we can get that worked into curriculums and do a better job of that. And also, Dwayne had said, what words encompass skills the students can learn that they need. So we're trying to, you know, match up with the students, make them realize, hey, these businesses need this. It's there, please get it, you know, it will help you in the long run. So, anything else? It was just...
A great, great partnership already, I believe, and we have some really good key players on there, and I give Mr. Messick and his team at the high school a ton of credit, because when we started this process last year, they really took it, and they attended a lot of training, they worked very hard. We've got some really great people in place that are working with the students, and I think putting them in a very good position. And what I love about this committee is they're helping us with topics like the attendance. We asked them, what is your threshold? You know, what do you do when your employees reach a certain level? Do you have incentives in place? And they shared all that information with us, and then they talked about the struggles that they have, and what are some of the things then we could do to help instill some of those values? So again, when they walk out our doors for the last time into the workforce, they're prepared to know what attendance expectations are so that they can be successful workers. So I think it's good collaboration. As Mr. Bostick said, when we come back, we kinda gave some homework out in terms of, what are those things you really want us to focus on? So, right away, some of the people said ownership, you know, owning the fact that you have a responsibility to your job, and coming here and fulfilling it, and being on time, and making sure if you're in assembly line, you're there, because they need that worker to fulfill that whole role of something being put together. So, I think, again, Rob's team has done just a fantastic job of finding those students that are wanting to do that. We're still able to get all the academics in, but also getting them out there and starting some of those hard and soft skills for employment, which students are wanting. And I think last year, we were kinda surprised at how many hours students were already working, and now we can help them funnel that in and stay focused also on finishing up their education in the strongest format that they can. So, I'm excited about the work, I think it will only get better, and it's really a starting point for what we're gonna continue to do as we work down then to how can the junior high support students, leading up to our Success Bound program, and then how can the intermediate work up, and then ultimately the primary. So it'll be a really nice spiral, leading right up to that piece by the end of the school year.
Yeah, it really allowed them to tailor the different educational programs they're offering to the students. That way they can somewhat focus on different groups, and it's a fluid thing, it can change year to year as they see the need of the students, so. A lot of good things going on out there, really are.
Mr. Messick, anything to add?
No, like I said, we just, well, yeah, I guess so. The, we are, we're obviously very, very excited. I do think that this is the direction that education is going, and I feel like that we are really far ahead in this, because we started on it pretty early. You know, we have great partnerships with the Career Center. We've come up with graduating programs that are coming through Pickwa High School now. We're reaching out to Edison to get certificated. We're doing a lot of flexible scheduling, just to meet some of our students' needs, and, like I said, it's very, it's exciting, it's real exciting. We went from last year roughly about five students in a kind of a career kind of program. This year, we're right around sixty. It's grown that much, just because of the dedication of people that are now involved in it. So it's, and it's, I literally get requests every day, you know, how can, how can do it? And we're constantly reaching out to our business partners or anybody in the community, you know, if you need people, we'd love to give you some kids, we'd love for you to provide, you know, opportunities. We have internships now. We have a, we have two kids that are working out at Anytime Fitness, that's an internship program for seventh period, because that's what we're gonna do in college. So, I mean, it's great, give them a chance to see those things, to really see what it's like to be in that, so it's pretty exciting.
We'll continue to keep you updated on that, because it's great work, and it'll develop as we move through the year.
I think, I just, looking at an email that you sent out earlier today, and, you know, I don't think people realize this, but even though kids don't graduate in four years, you just had a student at the high school work with that graduated in six years. That's outstanding. I mean, I don't think people in the community realize that we don't give up on them just because they didn't make it, and I commend the high school staff, and Darryl and Rob for doing that.
Yeah, it's a good point. There are districts, if a student doesn't graduate in the four years, they don't take them back, because that affects their report card, and that's where no Child Left Behind is leaving kids behind, because people are afraid of that data, and we've not done that at the high school, and Darryl Height has done a fantastic job with his team of letting those kids come back and finishing up with them, and letting them get those one or two credits that they need to get their diploma. And we do take hits on our report card from that sometimes, but it's worth getting that student that, that piece that lets them get out there and start getting a job. Any other questions?
No.
Okay, very good. Tony, a new staff update.
So we have twelve brand-new faces on our staff this year. We have a couple back there whom I'll introduce soon, but I got to spend two days with them in August, going through everything from, what are you gonna do the first day that you walk in, because we have some literally brand-new people to education, and then we have some folks that have several years of experience too. That culminated with the annual Meet the Teacher luncheon. We did some things differently this year, we invited some members of the community to come in, so they could start putting faces with names, members of our social groups who are out there, the Kiwanas, the Rotary optimists, those kinds of folks, and then had lunch, introduced them, and then of course, we had our friends from the Upper Valley Career Center there to introduce their new teachers as well. So, I know they're not on the agenda tonight, but I know Stephanie's here, and so is Ann. Stephanie's our new behavior intervention specialist, and Ann will be teaching, is teaching math at Pickwa Junior High School, so if you guys would both like to come up and introduce yourselves, we would love to hear from you. And you know what, we practiced the introduction, so you're all right.
I guess I'll just start. I'm Stephanie Cruder-Croll, I'm at Pickwa Central Intermediate School with Josh Kaufman. I'm the brand-new position of the behavior specialist, and I'm really excited about it. Still a lot to be working on and getting systems underway, but I've already felt at home, and I was just telling Ann, when Mr. Thompson was saying that you guys take a hit sometimes on your report card for the students, I'm like, that's why I love Pickwa! I really do. Honestly, I did not know much when Mr. Lyons hired me earlier this summer about Pickwa City Schools, but then Mr. Kaufman gave me a tour of PCIS, and I just keep hearing things about how you guys really put students first, so that's why I'm excited to be a part of you guys. Thanks. We didn't know we were doing this, by the way.
I wasn't at the beginning, but...
Oh, I didn't know.
It's okay. I'm Ann Howard, I'm at the junior high school with Jeff Clark, and I'm so happy to be here. I came from the O L T N G school districts to, so to come from a really big school district into a smaller school district has really opened my eyes, and it has really, I'm really blessed to be here, just because you guys truly care about your kids, and just hearing it again in this board meeting has made me really excited and happy to be here in the Pickwa School District. Just being here for two weeks with the kids, well, less than two weeks feels like a while, but I feel like I know a lot about the kids already, and they have, I have a hundred and thirty-eight different personalities in my classroom, and it makes me so happy that I chose teaching, and this is my first year of teaching, so thank you for hiring me into the school district.
Thank you, Beth. And welcome. And again, we have several new faces, and I encourage you to come out and get to know them as well. I could tell you, the whole first couple of weeks, I've spent talking to principals about how are new folks doing, making sure they're getting comfortable in their classrooms, and the principals are saying how great they feel about their new hires in the classroom too, and I got to see, I was in at PCIS today, as they were actively working through a very volatile situation with a young man, which is exactly why we had to make the decision to hire that position, and I couldn't believe it. I mean, within the twenty minutes that I was meeting with Josh, from the point where I met the kiddo, and he wouldn't do anything to do with me, in fact, he wanted me to get away, to the point where we got to the end, and he was sharing his comic book with me, and we got a chance to have a chat. Those things are priceless, because the goal then is that restorative justice. It's not, let's get them out, get them home, let's get them out, work with them, and get them back into the classroom as quickly as we can, and we saw evidence of that today, so. Group this year, and very excited about them. So, moving on into something very simple and quick, board policy update. It's as simple as we have to identify compliance officers for the purpose of the board policy. If there's ever a question about something being violated in board policy, we identify people to hear those things, and that's both me and Sarah Devers. So that's not a change, it's just something that has to be reviewed on a yearly basis.
Questions on that?
No.
All right. So I'd like to recommend the board approval of the established bus routes that are attached, and the bus stops for the 2018, 2018 school year as submitted. Recommend board approval of the attached list of Pickwa High School textbooks for disposal and removal from the inventory of the Pickwa City School District. Removal of board approval, I'm sorry, recommend board approval of the attached list of the K through six textbooks for disposal and removal from the inventory of the Pickwa City School District, and recommend board approval of the attached textbook proposal for adoption for the Pickwa City School District for the use of Pickwa High School.
Okay, any other questions for Dwayne? If not, can we have a motion to approve his agenda?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, if not, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Personnel agenda, Mr.?
I promise I'll be quick, Mr. Height. I talked about most of it earlier when I talked about the new staff, I see people looking at watches as well. No, the only thing I wanted to mention in this, because a lot of it's routine in that supplemental contracts, the volunteers, those things that are pretty typical, I did want to mention publicly that we do have a new system in place at all of our buildings for visitor management. It's called Raptor, we talked a little bit about that in the past, but it's active now. We're gonna send out some information as well to the public, but we won't need to fingerprint, essentially, every single person that walks in the building to drop something off, if you will. They'll be able to scan those folks when they come in, their IDs, and then give them a badge that they could be in the building for a temporary period of time. So, I just wanna mention that, because we are going to be sending out information to our families, so that they're aware that when they come in, they're gonna have to do that. So, the other side of that is, that goes along with the volunteers, and I just wanted to mention, we hired Travis Neese very late, in fact, we found out about his resignation the Friday before school started, and he took the place of Max Smith in the Success Bound program that Rob has talked about a couple of different times, and he's making that transition as we speak. So, great, great opportunity for him there. Outside of that, I recommend board approval of the personnel agenda.
All right.
I ask for your recommendation.
Can we have a motion to approve the personnel agenda?
May I?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We have no old business to come before the board tonight? No new business?
Just our boardwork session will be on August 27th, we're just gonna be reviewing any projects we might need to work on for the high school coming up in the future.
And that meeting will be here?
Yes, right here.
And then our next regular meeting is September 27th, 6:00 PM, here at the board office. So if there's nothing else, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Thank you.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion opposed? We adjourn.